I'd like to welcome everybody. This is, uh, time is currently 6:03. This is the day and time scheduled for the, uh, for the June meeting of the Westland Planning Commission. We welcome everybody and ask that you rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Administration, roll call please.
Uh, Durante.
Present.
Folks.
Present.
Hobbs.
Present.
Hopkins.
Present.
Richards.
Present.
Rounds.
Present.
Statchow.
Present.
Swokis.
Present.
And Repport.
Present.
We have a full call.
Ooh, exciting. Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the May 7th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So move.
So far.
Recognizing, uh, recognizing Durante for the motion to approve and Vice Chair Richards. I don't know why. Uh, Vice Chair Richards for the second. Uh, roll call please.
Uh, roll call vote approving the May 7th meeting minutes. Durante. You have Folks.
Yes.
Hobbs.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rounds.
Yes.
Statchow.
Yes.
Uh, hold on. Point of order's been raised. Uh, is the, was the mover present for the, uh, for the May 7th meeting?
No.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I said yes.
That's okay, Durante.
Okay. Uh, unfortunately, the, uh, the motion, uh, has to be reconsidered. I will re, uh, do the motion recognizing the, uh, the original movement as Swokis. And is the second still good? Recognizing the second correctly as, uh, Vice Chair Ruby Richards. Uh, once again, my apologies. I should've caught that. Uh, Administration, roll call please.
Uh, okay. This is the same motion approving the May 7th meeting minutes. Uh, Folks.
Yes.
Hobbs.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rounds.
Yes.
Statchow.
Yes.
Swokis.
Yes.
Uh, and Repport.
Yes.
Minister approved.
Thank you very much. This is the time when we, uh, we open up for citizens' comments. If, uh, any of our citizens have a, uh, a concern or a, uh, or an item to share that's not on our agenda, agendas can be found at the, uh, the podium. Please indicate your intention to, uh, to add an item to the agenda for our consideration at this time. Uh, anybody on my right? Anybody on my left? Seeing none, we'll move on to our, uh, to our agenda items. Uh, item number one has been withdrawn administratively prior to the meeting. Item two on our case number 0503D, proposed site plan approval for single-family home development. Uh, petitioner is Najim Seema.
Yep, Seema.
Uh, if the Administration can, uh, tell us a little bit about the, uh, the proposal, please?
Uh, sure. Thanks. Uh, there's two subject properties here. Uh, they're located on the west side of Newburgh, uh, just north of Ford Road and south of that Lowe's, uh, home improvement store. The two properties comprise of about two and a half acres, uh, and are currently vacant, um, tree planted. The petitioner proposes, uh, to develop six family, um, six single-family dwellings, uh, utilizing the existing zoning R1, some adjacent land uses and zoning. Properties to the north are zoned R1, single-family residential and developed by, uh, single-family dwellings. Properties to the south also zoned R1, uh, also developed by single-family dwellings. Properties to the west also zoned R1, also developed by single-family dwellings. And to the east, across the street, uh, from Newburgh, on the east side of Newburgh is a townhouse residential district developed by the Sheltering Pines condominium complex. Today, the petitioner is proposing again to develop a six, uh, single-family dwelling, um, development. Uh, all the proposed lots, um, shown on your screen will meet the setback requirements along with the minimum lot width and lot area requirements. Uh, the development will have access from Newburgh Road. See the curb cut there in the approximately midpoint of, uh, the property fronting Newburgh. Uh, the developer also proposes to provide a public street about the development that will eventually be dedicated, uh, to the city. The development will contain concrete sidewalks, uh, street trees for every parcel, um, and a common area in the southwest corner of the development that will contain, uh, additional landscape, uh, in addition to what is required. Uh, the petitioner proposes to construct, uh, three types of colonial homes. This is a rendering on the screen. There's a detailed elevation drawing materials in your backup, um, for residents at home. I'll put the, uh, on the screen. Um, again, three different types of colonial, uh, homes ranging from approximately 2,300 square feet all the way up to 2,800 square feet, uh, featuring three, between three and four bedrooms depending on the home type, uh, along with an attached two-gar, car garage. Uh, the homes will be constructed using a brick and limestone, uh, material, material on the exterior. Uh, an applicant, um, as we discussed, must obtain, um, stormwater approval from Wayne County. Additionally, we are conditioning the recommendation to approve this site plan, um, with the condition that street lights be installed per DTE, um, requirements. The developer has not obtained that information yet. Um, so again, uh, the recommendation from the Administration and Planning Department is to approve with the condition that street lights be, per DTE requirements. Um, Najim, the project is in the audience, uh, and him and I can answer any questions that you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Administration. Uh, the, uh, if I could please have the petitioner rise and approach the podium?
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, do you have anything to add to the, uh, to the presentation from the Administration? Anything you'd like to tell the, uh, to tell the Board?
I really don't unless you have a specific question that I can answer.
Oh, we'll get, we'll get to that. I'm sure we have some.
Sure.
Uh, okay. This is not a, uh, this is not a public meeting, but still, we like to hear from, uh, from the gathered public if anybody is interested. On my right, sir.
Good evening. Uh, I'm in this adjacent property. My main concern is water runoff.
Uh, could you please, for the record, just state your name?
My name is Corey Tinsky.
Hi, Corey.
Hi. Um, my main concern is water runoff. The neighborhood adjacent is, uh, known for quite a bit of water. There's a, uh, the property at, um, Beechwood and, um, Beechwood and Morley actually turns into a pond. There's ducks that come through. But furthermore, I'm the last house on the dead-end road and that runs downhill without any water control. And this, uh, property is about 12 inches lower than any of the adjacent properties around. So my main concern is where does the water from the road go? And the, if they're gonna raise that property, where would that water go as well?
Thank you very much for sharing your concern. Obviously, we're, uh, we're likely to address that with the petitioner, but one of the functions that we, that we have as the petitioner is here to hear your concern. So, uh, I'll call you back up once we're ready. Uh, anybody on my left like to speak on this matter? Uh, the, our newcomer on my right, would you like to speak on this matter? No? Hearing none. Uh, if I can please have you, uh, re, re-approach the podium?
Sure.
And I'll open it up to the, uh, to the, uh, to the Commission.
I, I do understand the gentleman's concern and I think, uh, during, Mohammed during his, uh, uh, presentation, he indicated that this project is subject to the Wayne County storm management requirements. And his concern should be really addressed with, uh, with that because the site is, has to go through an engineering, uh, process that will manage all the stormwater fall off and that will be stored underground and then will be transported via restrictions in accordance with the county requirements. So if the concern is flooding, I assume, uh, that should not be a concern because the, uh, the county standards address that.
Thank you very much. Opening it up to the, uh, to the Commission, is there anybody on my right that would like to, uh, to question the petitioner? Uh, recognizing, uh, Brian Hopkins.
So I had a chance to review your plans. Uh, I didn't see a retention pond, but I have been told by Administration that there's plans to be one. Is that true?
Uh, I, no, it's not true because the detention pond has certain requirements and part of these requirements is a buffer zone and that buffer zone is a minimum of 25 feet around. And if we provide that, then, uh, it negates the development because it takes so much room. And that's what I just alluded to a minute ago is that the county, uh, the county requirements with the detention of, of underground piping, that's how it's being handled.
Uh, you may, Administration, please, uh, I, I assume that you're about to, uh, to tell us a little bit, uh, water retention requirements?
It's about this topic, yeah.
Please.
Okay. Uh, I did say in the study session that there was a detention pond in the southwest corner. I think we were discussing that with the developer. The developer does have in the packet, um, stormwater detention calculations that I believe are actually proposed underground. And there is a grading plan as well in, uh, the packet that shows, um, a grading of the proposed site that will contain the stormwater that is dropped onto the site within the site. The resident had mentioned something about the street and this will not do anything to resolve any flooding in the street. But I want maybe Najim, can you clarify how the stormwater is being contained onsite underground for the resident and, and the Planning Commission? And again, I misspoke earlier when I said that there was going to be a detention pond. So that is one way of containing, um, stormwater onsite and they are not using that method. They are using another me, method if you can clarify.
Well, it, it is yes and no, so to speak, okay? The, we did attempt, sir, to, uh, design a pond to begin with and we did, uh, examine that. Now, again, by Wayne County standards, any property is not allowed to shed any water beyond its borders onto any adjacent properties. What the question is, I believe, is how to handle onsite if...
Correct.
Okay. So onsite, the standards, the Wayne County standards will allow a property to maintain a certain, uh, elevation of, of stormwater onto the, onto the street and by the curb, but not to the point where it prevents a hazard. However, the, as, uh, uh, Mohammed indicated, that our calculations within the documents that you have indicate that whatever waterfall is, is taking place, that is being, uh, stored underground and then released into the system for the restriction requirements. So that's how, that's how it is handled. There is no dedicated pond per se, okay? Although we do have some, some, at the, at the south, at the west end of the site, we have what it looks like a pond, but that's actually a cul-de-sac where you turn around and it has some, you know, minor collection in there like I indicated.
So is this like a French well then?
Uh, it's, uh, basically what, uh, what happens is the, and we've done this quite a bit, you know, and, and as, as required, that actually big excavation is, is created and perforated pipes of diameter three foot or five foot are buried under the site and they're, they're and all the waters, all the storm runoff is directed. It's basically a reservoir under, under the, the, underground, okay? As this reservoir, or as the water level elevates in this reservoir, there is a release, basically a pipe that goes into the system. Uh, and, and that will, will start to, as, as the water level rises, then the water will start to go into the system. The whole idea behind this, so that when you have a rainfall, uh, be it a 10-year flood or a 50-year flood, that you do not deposit all the rainfall that happens onto the street and on the roofs of the houses into the system one time. So you take it underground and you hold it. And that's why it's called detention because we are detaining that for a certain period of time so that it can go into the system slowly without flooding the, the, either the property or eventually the streets.
So when you say the system, you're meaning Westland system? Westland sewer runoff?
Not the sewer, the storm.
I'm sorry?
The storm, the storm.
The storm drain?
Yeah, yeah, the storm, not the sewer.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that all?
Yes, for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, well, is there anyone on my, uh, on my left?
Yes.
Administration, do you? I can come back to you after the, uh, after the Board is done examining.
Okay. Stormwater is reviewed and approved by the county. If, if the Planning Commission wants to make it that a condition, it could do that.
Thank you very much. Uh, recognizing Indiana.
Yes. Okay. Uh, yes, I, um, those homes look lovely. I mean, beautiful, uh, beautiful homes. However, the property that you've chosen, a good piece of par, uh, parcel, is all wooded. So we're talking about water runoff, retention, making sure that everything flows properly so the homeowners as well as the surrounding areas don't have a problem.
Sure.
Um, the, in your plan, it appears that all the trees will be taken down and the only trees that will exist after building are the individual trees that are gonna be planted in front of the home. And also there was on your print, trees along the, uh, main road. Okay. Is there a possibility for, as far as the neighbors are concerned, to have some type of wooded barrier so that maybe this would help with your possible runoff and a possible drainage into someone else's property? And you do have a certain amount of distance from your property, your property lines to your setbacks and, and, uh, is this something that you may consider, uh, to aid in, uh, this, um, water retention? And also, um, you know, it might even be nice idea to retain some of those, uh, trees that are already existing if you can possibly do that with your, with your diagram.
We, definitely. We contemplated that and we, uh, looked at it with, uh, we looked at it and as you may know, that the city requires that a tree survey be conducted, so on, on whatever is existing onsite. So we do have a site survey and that site tagged every tree on the, on the property and designates certain trees that are sick, uh, even if they are, they, you know, look, certain trees that would fall where the footprint of the house would be, so they have, they have to go. And, uh, there are trees that hap, happens, uh, or happen to be located in the backyards of these houses, yes. We would love to work, you know, on these and leave them as a, a boundary, so to speak, or as a buffer. Uh, that is, that is something we welcome, of course. Yeah. Uh, but I am, I am not sure as far as the, how the, the trees would help in the, uh, detention. I would have to consult with our engineers on that because as you, as you know, once you, uh, clear up the site and remove all this organic on top and then excavate for basements and then grade, to have the grade to be compatible with, with, with the neighborhood, basically, because we don't want to be too low or too high. And, uh, so, uh, what I'm trying to say, the short, the short thing is that some of these trees that we may want to keep, that they may get filled. That's the point that I'm trying to.
And, yeah, that's understandable. Uh, how about possibly, uh, planting additional trees on the back part of the perimeter of the lot lines? So that, uh, not only having them in front, but in the back. If you have, you know, and I do understand the construction part of things.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
But you may wanna consider that. Uh, you said that, uh, you're having like eight-inch trees. That's a good, nice, healthy size, uh, size tree. But maybe just even on the, uh, outer perimeter there, that, uh, that may assist as well in multiple ways.
Some good ideas, yes.
Okay. So, uh, you think that that may be something you consider?
Of course.
Okay. All right, I'd like to.
And if, uh, as we, as we come to the city for permits, uh, the city requires that a landscape plan be part of the documents that we submit for, for permits. So the, this, the landscape design would be included in that, in that document.
Okay.
In addition to engineering and all the detailing and what have you.
Yeah. Uh, one other question too. Did you have an opportunity to, uh, to walk that area at all, the property?
I, I did. I did walk it with, uh, the, my client first and then with a couple of, uh, contractors. And I also walked it with DTE. And this is where I would like to ask the Commission, uh, because we have a power line that crosses that, that property, run north to south. And, uh, working with DTE to have a estimate to route it or reroute it or work it, they're saying, okay, you clean it up, remove whatever trees and then you come talk to us. And that's why we didn't have those street lights and, and in there. So, uh, and we were, and I even came to the city and came to Mohammed and said, please give us a permit to clean up. He says, nope, I gotta be here first. So I am here now and I would really seek, I don't know if it's your commission or is it the city, uh, building department, is that we be, uh, issued a permit to, to clean up.
Okay. Yeah, and I was asking that because I was just concerned on how much wildlife was actually in that area as well. Uh, if, uh, in your walking through, if you had noticed a lot of, you know, wildlife, so it was just another thing, you know, that goes along with...
I, I understand.
Taking down a nature area.
I've been there a few times and actually I parked on the house to the, it's kind of easy to get to because there's no place to park there, except for neighbors' property. I don't know if it's your house or not.
Yeah, you walked over mine. You walked a lot with me. At the very beginning.
Yeah, see.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, anybody on my right? Recognizing Ruby Richards.
So I think you agree that you're developing something over in that area. My question is, I noticed that you're gonna provide a public street throughout the development that will be dedicated to the city.
Correct.
Will you be naming this, um, street?
You know, this is a good question.
And do you have a name yet?
And I am embarrassed to say that I haven't thought about it.
Oh, okay. So you don't, you don't know yet?
I don't know yet, no.
That was, thank you. Yeah, name it Ruby.
I, I should've thought about it. I should've thought about it.
All right, thank you.
The name is after him. How's that? He's the neighbor.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Richards. Anybody on my left? Recognizing Commissioner Swokis.
I think you have a really nice, uh, plan and I think it's a, a, a really nice fit for, um...
We still have, uh, we still have...
For that part.
I'm sorry.
So through the chair to the petitioner. My biggest concern there is, would you, of course, obviously have seen how busy that corner is and the potential for someone attempting to make a left turn to be able to go, say, north, was it northbound on, uh, on Newburgh? That could be a concern. Even trying to make a, a, a right turn because, you know, some people may say, well, you know, I'm trying to go onto Ford Road and head east on Ford Road. You're still gonna have to move over a couple lanes and then get to the turn lane. Um, one of the things I would like to make conditional on the approval is, um, I'd like to see a traffic study just so that you can assess how that could work and is there a possibility of maybe you have a no-left turn or something of that nature? Because my biggest concern would be the number of accidents occur there of people trying to, you know, ingress and egress into that spot, especially, um, during peak traffic times. If somebody's coming, say, you know, they're going northbound on Newburgh and they're gonna try to make that left turn even into the new subdivision, they may not be able to even get into the center lane to try to make that turn because the, you know, the light there at, uh, Ford and Newburgh would be so backed up that they went, or they may be trying to hold up traffic in one of the traffic flow lanes. So I really think it would be advantageous to, um, you know, do a traffic study to see that because, you know, with, with, with police, you know, we want, we wanna try to make things as efficient as possible and as safe as possible, not only for residents but also people who are just visiting the city because that is one of the major thoroughfares in the city and will probably get busy as we continue to develop. So, um, is that something you're willing to do, uh, to take a look at that?
Well, obviously, we want to be safe, of course, and whoever is, uh, I, I would like to note that, uh, I believe this, uh, the design was, uh, reviewed by the city consultant, OHM, correct?
We're talking about six family, single-family dwellings, uh, here, probably one of the least intensive development we've had all year. So if the Planning Commission wants to get into the business of requiring traffic studies for all projects, it's your call. However, just note it, note that this is a single-family development of six single-family dwellings. And, um, if the Commission does want to condition approval on that, you can, and I can work the, with the developer, uh, on getting that done.
I just think we, you know, we, not only do we owe it to, um, the residents, but I think we owe it to our police department and public safety. we owe it to our police department and public safety, because if they're, you know, having to look at increased, you know, calls to that area for accidents and even the fire, you know, making sure that, you know, that they're not being overburdened with that because that is a very serious corner. I mean, I was just there yesterday and it took me 20 minutes to be able to make a left turn going south on Newburgh onto Ford Road because of where I was coming from. You know, it wasn't like I was going to go back down and come around the other way. But I just, I get very concerned about that with an aging population and all of those things. I think it's just good to take a look at and it'll, it'll help things. I mean, I understand, you know, single families, only six places and that, but you never know how big families are. And of course, when families get new houses, people come to visit and, you know, just to be, just to be safe for everybody, you know, ingress and egress out of the neighborhood, the whole situation, you know. I want to see our city remain safe as possible. And if we take a look at it, I think that's always better to err on the side of caution.
I, maybe with the, you know, with the commissions, or the, you know, approval of that, I mean, we would, I would be very happy to sit down with the city engineers and, and go over this aspect of it. And if a traffic impact study is, is needed, I don't think that we will shy away from doing that. However, I'm, at this point, I am a little reluctant, just due to the fact that we're still talking about a low-intensity use of the site.
But we have a high-traffic corner.
If I may interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
A point of clarification to the administration, please. With every proposal, is not every proposal submitted to both the fire and the, you know, the traffic department or the police department for traffic, traffic opinions?
Yeah, I didn't really answer the question, did I? I send all of these projects to all of the directors, including the police and fire chief. Sometimes they have issues, sometimes they don't. I did not receive any comment back.
Now, is, is it common for you to not receive a, a comment from, from traffic division? If they don't have an issue, or do they, are they supposed to respond with positively that there is no issue?
I specifically ask for an email if they have concerns, and if not, then not to send anything. There are a handful of occasions every year where police will request a traffic study, engineering will say that there's an issue, it's cleared up before it comes to the council. There have been a couple times for drive-through restaurants when traffic impact study was presented to you, because the developer did not want to modify something, use it as leverage here to, to do that, accomplish that. I hope that I've answered your question.
Well, I think that, I think that my commissioner is trying to express that he would, he would be more comfortable if we were certain that there is no, no traffic issue, rather than relying on a suggestion that we assume that there's no problem just because we haven't heard anything about it. And I guess, I guess it would be a request from the, from the commission as a body whole to the administration. Perhaps it's probably better for us to, to actually get an answer from them that there is no issue. It is just to assume arguendo without any, without anything from them, that there is no issue. I'd prefer to know rather than to assume. And I believe that's what, what our commissioner is, my commissioner is, is trying to, trying to convey. Not, of course, suggesting that we, that we would arbitrarily or capriciously require you to spend additional money that that's unnecessary for you to spend. We'd just like to be certain because, of course, that is a, that is a, an area where we see quite a number of traffic accidents.
I can certainly put that in my motion that we, you know, that we have a affirmative response back from our traffic bureau. If they, if they see nothing with it, then we just won't have that, we won't ask them to do anything but a traffic study, as long as we have buy-in from the police and fire.
Very good, then. Anybody on my right? Anybody additionally on my right? Anybody additionally on my left? I've already recognized you once, Commissioner. Do you, do you require to be?
This is in addition to my initial request from the petitioner in regards to adding the trees. And he didn't, he did agree that that would be a good idea for the rear back line. And I'd like to also have that added as a conditional to the approval.
Let me see if I understand you correctly, that you would like to amend a motion that has not yet been made, to require that this, that this petition not move forward unless additional trees are, are added.
Well, I'm not amending a motion because we haven't made one yet.
Right. I'm suggesting that you're, that your motion is out of order.
My statement is, is that I'm adding that to my previous comments.
That you would like whoever moves to add that.
That it be conditional on the approval, because he did agree that that would be a good idea for, for the property.
I, I don't recognize that, that that was agreed to as a condition of his, of his proposal. He merely did not want to argue with you, ma'am.
I don't know. I think he said yes.
Okay.
Petitioner?
Very good, then. Hearing no additional.
I think you need to settle that one.
I'll have order, please.
Okay.
Hearing no additional from the right or the left, a motion is in order. May I please have that motion? Recognizing Commissioners Wokas.
Okay, I will move that case number 0503D, the proposed site plan approval for the single-family home development parcel ID, as noted in the, in the petition, west side of Newburgh, north of Ford, be approved and forwarded to the city council with a conditional recommendation for approval, subject to the departmental requirements and recommendations. In addition to that, that the petitioner take a look at the trees, the tree situation on the back as a buffer and attempt to make, as reasonably as possible, save as many as he reasonably can save or plant newer or healthier trees to add a, a buffer as a, as an opportunity to, to be a good neighbor and keep the essential character of the area looking the same. I also make it conditional that we get a affirmative response back from the fire and police that they have no traffic issues to the area. If they do have issues, and then, then we'll make that, we can ask that that be a condition. In addition to that, that the street lights be installed per DTE planning requirements. And a successful approval by Wayne County for the storm water plan be also successfully received approval from Wayne County.
Second.
Did I hear Commissioner Hobbs? Oh, Commissioner Durante on the second. So that's a motion by Wokas Durante for a second. Roll call, please, sir.
This is a roll call vote to recommend approval of case number 0503D with the conditions listed on the record. Hope to give you that fire PD and engineering traffic issue email sometime before early next week. Roll call, Duranti.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Hobbs.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rounds.
Yes.
Statiau.
Yes.
Sorry.
Wokas.
Yes.
And Rappaport.
Yes. I forgot that I asked to go last.
Motion is approved. Thank you, Najem.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. You can contact the administration for the next steps forward. And thank you very much for your time and your patience today.
Yes, I'm not sure I got my, the three permit, but I'll talk with Mohammed on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, item number three. I believe we have an administrative thing to take care of. It's come to my attention that the, that the petitioner would like to withdraw temporarily. May I have a motion to remove case number 168H, sorry, 1686H from the, from the agenda for today?
So moved.
Motion by Wokas, support by Ruby Richards. All those, all those in favor, please indicate so. Aye?
Aye.
Please indicate, opposed, please indicate so, nay. The ayes have it, the chair is not in question. Moving on to case number 2266, proposed rezoning from CB3, general commercial business district to CB4, vehicle service district at 3473 Warren Road. Petitioner Brandon Kasab. Administration, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, the subject site here is located on the south side of Warren and east of Wayne. The property is currently zoned CB3. That's our general commercial business district and comprises of a vacant restaurant building formerly occupied by Alexander the Great. The petitioner is proposing to rezone the property. It's about 32,000 square feet from CB3 to CB4. CB4 is our vehicle service district and the proposal after that is to redevelop the site with a 3,600-square-foot named Clean Express Auto Wash, essentially an automated vehicle wash. Site plan to follow, but I can throw it up if you guys have questions on that during this rezoning case. Adjacent land use and zoning in the area, property to the north is CB3, general commercial business district, developed by a drive-through Little Caesar's and Chicken Shack Restaurants. Property to the south is zone CB3 and is developed by Soho Grand Banquet Hall, that little sliver L-shaped jog there. The property to the east is the parking lot and wooded area, the new banquet hall, that's not on your screen, old aerial. Property to the east, CB3, and as well Soho Grand Banquet Hall. Property to the west, again, CB3, and is developed by a retail plaza that includes a slice of the 80s, and then you have that Tim Hortons drive-through entry area as well. The zoning ordinance requires the planning commission to make findings when reviewing or, and considering a rezoning request. Two of those are the adjacent land uses and the adjacent zoning, as read on the record. The next one is the suitability of the property in question for the uses permitted under the existing zoning classification. The subject property is currently a vacant building formerly used as a restaurant, as I mentioned already, a great. It has sat vacant for a few years now with no real development interest consistent with the CB3 district. Next is the trend of development, if any, in the general area of the, of the property in question, any changes, if any, in any zoning classifications that are adjacent or in the general area of the property. With the exception of Soho Grand Banquet Hall in this specific area, there have been no major redevelopments or developments. There has been several reoccupancies of the adjacent plazas to the north, to the west, and also at the hall as well. Last is the objective of the City of Westland Land Use Master Plan, the 2018 City of Westland Master Plan. Future land use designation for this site is shop and dine district. The administration and planning department are recommending approval of this proposal for a variety of, of purposes. The site is located on a major, major thoroughfare, being Warren Road between a commercial node at Wayne and Warren, and consider the site suitable for a car wash. The petitioner is proposing to upgrade the landscaping along Warren Road to include a decorative fence. And the petition also facilitates the master plan goal of promoting diverse economic opportunity. That's all I have. The petitioner is hearing the audience, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. This is the rezoning case, and following this is the site plan approval for this, same exact conversation piece. If you want to get into the site plan, just curious for me to put it up on the record, that's fine, but just know that this is just the rezoning hearing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The, will the petitioner please rise and approach the podium? Be recognized.
Good evening, everyone. Eric Williams with Stonefield Insurance. I think Mo gave a thorough presentation of what we are seeking to do, CB3 to CB4, to facilitate the redevelopment of the vacant restaurant. So again, just to highlight a couple of the items that Mo did speak to, aside from the adjacency to CB3 zoning, I think the other thing I would like to point out is at the intersection of Wayne and Warren, you do have two parcels that are also zoned CB4. So just to expand on kind of the adjacency, there are vehicular uses at the intersection. You can see the darker purple there. And then obviously, the significance of the roadways. I believe Wayne is seven lanes at this point, Warren's five. So again, heavy vehicular presence here. Mo also pointed out the fact that this restaurant has been vacant for a number of years. Mr. Kasab is in attendance as well. He's sought other tenants to utilize the building. It's kind of at that point of not coming back, you know, built quite a number of years ago and is, is just looking for, for new life here. As far as the trend of development in the area, I think maybe taking this a little bit more globally, I know everybody's seen this throughout other communities. People are seeking to develop new car washes along with redevelop existing washes. It's going to bring a, a great convenience, a high-quality feature to the community as folks are exiting and entering the shop and dine district that is envisioned within the master plan. Obviously, this is placed kind of on the periphery if we do look at the future land use map. As people go east along Warren, it kind of gives you that nice convenience as you maybe end your day or begin your day. You can go ahead and wash your car and continue on. With, we would be happy to answer any questions relative to the rezoning.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a, this is a public hearing. Doesn't look like we have very much public left in the audience, however. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this matter on my right? Any in the audience on my left? We'll bring the, the petitioner back up and we'll open it up to the, to the commission. Before the commission begins, I'd like to prepare you, sir. Not too very long ago, we had a, a similar petition for rezoning in a similar area. So you are probably going to get some questions about the appropriateness of your rezone. With that, I am going to ask if there's anybody on my right that would like to examine the petitioner?
Hello? Anybody want to talk?
Seeing none at this time, I'll come back to the right. If there's anybody on my left that would like to examine the petitioner, seeing, recognizing David Wokas.
Through the chair to the petitioner. Looking at your plan, I mean, it looks really nice. I mean, I, I think it's a nice thing. My biggest concern, and, and this is something that whether I make the motion or someone else makes it, I look at that corner, and as you said, there are five on, five lanes on Warren, seven on Wayne Road. I can potentially see somebody trying to make a left turn out of the car wash. I can potentially see somebody trying to make a left turn out of the car wash to try to go back, you know, to go the other, to go basically westbound on Warren, and I can see the potential for accidents, a backup at the car wash for people trying to get out to go that way. Have you looked at any, like, have you done the traffic study or anything to look at it and say, you know, maybe we need to just say no left turn here or, you know? That's my concern because, you know, again, I first always like to err on the side of safety for residents and for your customers. And, I mean, I'll be honest, I know that that corner probably in the last 15 years is like a speedway. To me, it's like driving on the Autobahn in Germany, you know? People run the lights and then sometimes you can't even get out of there, you know? Like, if you're on any of the miles, if you try to make a left turn, you can't let alone make a right turn. So have you done any kind of traffic study or do you find that to be a concern, that you have people make a left turn and maybe that would be backing up people coming out of your car wash?
Sure, yeah. Is this an item we want to address with the rezoning or the site plan? I just want to make sure. Happy to do it either.
Well, I mean, for me, for me to even consider the rezoning, I just need to be satisfied that you've thought about that. I mean, I know we don't have anything currently on the record from our police and fire departments and I certainly, if I was making the motion, I would probably ask for confirmation from that they have no issues, but asking you as the petitioner, are you looking at that from a safety standpoint? Because for me to rezone from CB3 to CB4, I take a look at the history of where we may have turned somebody else down in a similar situation just a couple of months ago. Again, that could potentially open the city up to litigation or it could not. I don't know. You just never know with people nowadays, but for me to do that, I just want to feel comfortable about that, that you've looked at and is that something you think, you know, when you get down to the site plan approval, that you have thought, well, maybe we need to just say no left turn? Because I literally could see if people were trying to make a left turn, you would have, we could potentially have increased accidents there, but you could have people backed up and you would not have a good flow of, you know, egress out of your car wash.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So happy to answer that question and maybe dive into that detail. So I think your main concern is left out with the potential of queuing into the roadway at some point. So again, when we look at the site plan, which I'm sure everybody's seen already, we do have queuing of up to 22 cars on site for the wash itself. With these newer washes, there's some, you know, some nice features to them where they can slow down the wash, they can speed up the wash. If they do see that there is a small backup at the exit, they can go ahead and slow down the tunnel to ensure that there isn't, you know, fender bender, bumper to bumper on site. So that is a nice feature that they do have. The other piece, as far as left turnout, so I can say that we did not do a traffic impact study and I think it's kind of the same that you just have with the previous applicant. You know, the city had not indicated the need for one at this point. I would also state the fact that it's a Wayne County roadway, so we will be going through that same review process with their, you know, stormwater engineering side of it, but also with the traffic engineering side. So at which point, if they had indicated the need for, you know, again, if it's restrict left turns, that's a conversation to have. You know, we would most definitely look to complete a traffic impact study if that was an indication from the county. Maybe it's restrict left turns during, you know, the morning rush hour, the evening rush hour, but maybe at lunchtime, you know, people can make lefts in and out. I think the other thing that I would also speak to with the use itself, I'm sure many of you have been to these newer car washes. It's got, it's a subscription model, right? So generally, and I'm not a subscriber myself, but people that do subscribe are going to return to the same wash over and over, or maybe there's one or two within the community. So I think you start to gain a familiarity with the location. So let's say, you know, somebody's coming west to Warren Road in the morning, maybe they're not going to make a left turn in to then have to make a left turn out and continue, but maybe in the evening, they say, okay, well, I'm going to wash my car in the evening. So I think really what I'm pointing to is the fact that there is familiarity with the site, with this being a subscription model, is you're going to get the same return customers. So if they know they have a challenge at some point, you know, maybe it's evening, maybe it's morning, whatever it might be, I think they're going to selectively decide when they actually visit the property and wash the car, depending on the direction of travel. So again, if, you know, if the police department, the fire department would like to see a traffic impact study, I think that's something we could provide at that point. Again, we didn't provide it at this point in time because it wasn't a concern that rose, but, you know, if that's something that is a must-have, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to provide that.
So let me make sure I understand this. So you're saying it's subscription only, so when they come for the first time to the thing, they have to buy like a subscription package to continue doing business there? Or they can't do a one-time wash there?
It could be a one-time wash. I think the majority of their customers do end up being, falling within that subscription model, so you're getting the same people over and over. But I'm not saying that you couldn't come for a one-time wash. That's, no.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you know, that's just a minor concern for me, but just to look at that and, you know, it's good that you have that ability to settle down on that and I think that's good. But I appreciate you explaining everything in detail. I don't have anything else.
Thank you. I will remind the board, please keep your investigations, your questions to the petitioner limited as much as possible to the issue before us, which is only the question of whether a zoning change is appropriate. Questions about, questions pertinent to the ultimate use of this property, being the site plan, are appropriate in brief only. So please do not go into detail about how the site plan, the site will eventually be used. That is not an appropriate use of the board's time today. Is there anybody on my right that would like to examine? Recognizing Darryl Rounds.
Hey, good evening. How are you, sir?
Great, how are you?
All right. Question that I have is regarding the fact that you're, that we're talking about rezoning this to CB4 in our shop and dine district. So what's the expected life of this business?
Dennis Miller, I'm the consultant for...
Pleasure to meet you, Mr. Miller. How are you?
I'm doing good.
Good.
Forever.
Okay.
We're not, this is, this will be number, well, we're hitting number 97 this week, number of car washes we have. We're out of Columbus and the person, the CEO right now, who we had a call with today, he did number one and we're at 97 right now. So and he comes to Detroit and drives around the sites. So he's been in about 16 years now doing these type of car washes.
So the first one was done in 16 years ago?
16 years ago in Columbus. So we have a stronghold in Ohio, Virginia, Pennsylvania, and now we're coming to Michigan. We have two, two open right now, both of them in Roseville. We bought a couple that are under construction. So we're in for the long haul, I guess. He's been in the business a long time and is real innovative and changes that are coming on the car washes with the environmentally safe chemicals, you know, the backs that dry the cars outside are free, that you can use. And then we got the blowers and stuff. And when you get out of the tunnel, you don't need to get wiped down or anything. It's really dried off the car. There's no people stacking up when you leave to dry your cars unless they want to use the backs and they'll circle around, do the backs, so. But for the long term, you know, we're not fly-by-night, you know, we got 100 of them right now, so.
97.
And they're all, I'm sorry, 97. We're talking about 100 today, that's why I got that. But we're in for the long term and they're excited about coming to Detroit and it would be a great opportunity for us to...
So you say excited about coming to Detroit, so this will be the first one?
I don't know whether this will be in the, you know, 10 down, 10 down the road. We got eight or 10 that we're going to do this year besides the two. So and they're all run by the company, too. We don't have franchisees or franchise groups, company-run. So it's, we have a staff in place, regional managers and, you know, managers of the locations. So very, very good operations internally.
I think I'm good for now.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody additionally on my left? Recognizing Deanna Stachow.
Yes, thank you for thinking of investing in Westland. Do appreciate it. However, as you had stated earlier, that this is a, our City of Westland Master Plan Future Land Use Map indicates shop and dine. And it from the CB3 to the CB4 could only open up unsuitable businesses for that shopping And that, I think that I wasn't, I'll have to reserve my comment, my last comment for the next session, but those are my concerns.
Could I?
Absolutely, please respond.
Yeah, so I think within, within the master plan and maybe I was, it had indicated the shop and dine district calls for uses which focus on retail, services, and entertainment. So I think the way, you know, we were looking at this, again, we're kind of on the periphery of that district. I think we're the southeastmost parcel or within one or two parcels of the edge. And knowing that nobody wants their shop and dine district to have a car wash smack that in the middle of it, right? That's really not our intention here. We're trying to, you know, find the edge of the district where we know there's going to be people coming in and out of the district, shopping, dining, maybe going to entertainment, and also providing them that service as they come to and from the district. So again, we believe that we fit within the confines of what that intention is. Now, it's not necessarily the most walkable use, it's not an entertainment use, but it does fall within the service use that was indicated in the master plan.
Thank you very much. Anybody additionally on my right? Seeing none? Anybody additionally on my left? I'm recognizing Deborah Fox.
Thank you for coming out today. I'm not a fan of having the car wash there in the shop and dine district. I understand everything you've said and it is probably a very good thing for the city to have it right there, but I would rather see it in the district that it should be in and not right there. So I won't be voting for that one, for your facility. I just think we need more restaurants or something like that.
All right. Anybody additionally on my right? I believe I've heard from everybody on my left. Before I call for a vote, I'm going to take a moment. Just for clarification, it wasn't, I didn't note, are there CB4s, potential vehicle uses around this use?
There are, not adjacent. There are two CB4 districts. There is this auto store, auto cartoons, and there is this gas station BP on the southwest corner. Those are the only two parcels that are zoned CB4.
Very good.
On my map anyways and within the general area.
And the petitioner mentioned that this was on the periphery of our shop and dine. Can you give idea of exactly how on the periphery this is? It might be relevant for decision-making.
Can you see that adequately? Well, not yet, but what I'm doing. Okay, hold on one second. All right. This is the property here where my cursor is. Let me zoom in a little bit. No. That is the shop and dine district. Everything in that red and where my cursor is, is where the property is. And I'll zoom out a bit so you can see it.
And the, the large red area to the north of it, that's, that's the property commonly known as Westland Mall, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I had for the administration. A motion is in order? On my right, motion on my right? Looking for a motion on my left? If I don't get a volunteer, I'm going to assign somebody. I am going to put Mr. Rounds on the spot. Mr. Rounds, please make the motion. Please remember to close the public hearing.
Disclose it?
Yeah. All you have to do is, I move to close the public hearing, waive the normal rules, and then you just go on with it.
Okay, I move to close the public hearing and waive the normal rules. I move that, that we rezon from CB3 to Commercial Business District to CB4 Vehicle Service District, pretty located at 347333 Warren Road, south side of Warren, east of Wayne. Contention upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Very good. Looking for a second. That is made by Darryl Rounds, supported by Ruby Richards. Roll call, please. The motion on the floor is to approve, subject to, well, departmental requirements and recommendations.
Yep, got it. Thank you. This is a roll call vote to recommend approval of case number 2266. Roll call, Durante.
No.
Foles.
No.
Hobbs.
No.
Hopkins.
No.
Richards.
No.
Rounds.
No.
No.
Swokas.
No.
In Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay. It's up to you how you want to handle that, obviously.
Seeing as how there is a, there is not a motion to approve, I will now entertain a motion to recommend, to recommend denial of the rezone. May I have a, may I have a motion to that effect? Recognizing David Swokas.
We move that we close the public hearing on case number...
2266, proposed rezoning from CB3 to CB4 Vehicle Service District, 34733 Warren Road, south of Warren, east of Wayne Road, and forward it to the city council with a recommendation of denial, subject to the comments made.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Recognizing the second from Sam Durante. Motion by, taken by Durante. Roll call, please.
Okay. This is a roll call vote to recommend denial of case number 2266. Durante.
Yes.
Foles.
Yes.
Hobbs.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rounds.
Yes.
Stachow.
Yes.
Swokas.
Yes.
In Rappaport.
No.
The motion to recommend denial is approved.
Good then. This is not the end of the road. You still have a, an opportunity to argue your, your case before the, before the city council. The, the commission, however, has spoken and they are extremely concerned that we have recently denied a, denied a similar motion and their is, is that even as fringe as your, to the fringes of the zone, as your, as your proposal is, it's still out of the flavor for that area. So please, please be prepared to make your, to make your case to the city council. We do thank you for your interest.
Chairman, just a quick...
Yes, sir.
We will, we cannot and will not be hearing 2266A.
That would be the, the next case on, on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Wait a minute. I, I show our next case on the agenda being case, item number five, 2266A, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's the site plan approval for a use in the CB4 district, which you just approved of. Or... or a denial of, the rezoning.
I understand. So I'm going to need a, a motion to remove case number 2266A from the, from the agenda. So moved. Recognizing the motion by Swokis, support by Foles. All those in favor, please indicate so. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The chair is not in question, the ayes have it. Moving on to case number 228, proposed land division approval. Petitioner Bashar Albana. May I please have the, the petitioner? Oh, actually, first we need to hear from the administration. Please sit tight, petitioner.
I'm trying to shuffle my paperwork around. Give me one second. The subject property is zoned R5, single-family residential. It's outlined in yellow on your screen. It's developed by a single-family dwelling. The petitioner is seeking approval to split the property into two parcels approximately where that red line is. Purpose is to build a new home on the resulting vacant parcel. The existing parcel at 35259 Caddy is bigger than typical home parcels in the city. It's 208 feet wide along Caddy Street and approximately 49,000 square feet. There's the survey showing the 208 at the top. This is the proposed survey split, 104 on each side along the frontage, with approximately 25,000 square feet for each. These parcels are well in compliance with the bulk requirements of the R5, single-family residential district. The resulting home, or the home that exists on the right-hand side parcel, including the garage, will still continue to comply with the setback and bulk requirements as well. The administration and planning department recommend approval of this petition. Thank you.
Thank you very much, administration. If I can please have the, the petitioner rise and be recognized at the podium? If you have anything to add to the, to the, to the administration's, this is the time to, to talk to us.
No problem. Just basically, that's what I'm looking to do.
Sir, if you could identify yourself to the record?
Bashar Albana.
Thank you very much. Did you have anything to add to the, to the presentation? Anything you'd like us to know?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a huge property. It's being used, the site of it, it's, where I'm proposing to develop is basically used as a track back in the day when the previous owner had it. There's a lot of trees that are pretty much dead, there's nothing to do there. I fear it's a lot better keeping it that way and, you know, building new property on a new home, single-family home, whether it's one-level or colonial. And also, cities, more taxes, instead of having a property that's not being used for much.
Thank you so much. This is not a, a public hearing, and we seem to have run completely out of public, so I'm not going to waste everybody's time by passing it over to the public. We'll go directly to the, to the board. Is there anybody on my right that would like to ask questions of this petitioner? Seeing no, seeing none?
Trying to make it simple.
It, it does seem pretty simple. Anybody on my left?
No.
I'm seeking, I'm seeking a whole, I'm seeing a whole lot of shaking heads. At this time, a motion is in order.
So moved.
Okay, recognizing Ruby Richards for the motion.
I move to say case number 2268, proposed land division approval, 35259 Caddy, north of Palmer, east of Wayne Road, city council for, for approval. Recommendation approval.
Support. Ruby Richards making the motion, support by Durante. Roll call, please.
All right. Roll call, vote to recommend approval of 2268. Durante.
Yes.
Yes.
Hobbs.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rounds.
Yes.
Stachow.
Yes.
Swokis.
Yes.
And Rappaport.
Yes. I will choose not to disagree with everybody today. So, sir, thank you very much for your time and your patience. I realize this is one. You can contact the administration for the next steps on your, on your land division, and good luck with the, with the city council. Now is the time when, when we do commissioners' comments. Once again, this is, I have a number of, a number of concerns about, about us filibustering, so let's try to keep our comments short and sweet, please. And we will start with Mr. Durante at the end.
I pass.
Nothing from Durante. Mr. Rounds?
I pass. I pass as well. I'm good.
Jessica?
Hi, also.
Thank you very much. Hobbs. Brian?
I think we had a great meeting tonight, and I think we, we did well as a commission in sticking with the master plan. I believe we voted in the right matter in this situation. And I believe that, that there are areas where this car wash can be put other than in our shop and dine district. We have a lot of space here, and I believe that it could be used in the right manner. Again, like you had said, that we're all about litigation on this, of approving something like this and just denying the other one just merely two meetings ago. The traffic was a concern. But overall, I think we had a great meeting. That's all I have.
And it's a good thing that nobody else commented, because wow. No, 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 I'm just joking. But thank you very much, Brian. I concur with a lot of your comments. Ruby?
Yes, I agree with Brian that it was a good meeting tonight, and I just want to say happy birthday to David.
Yes.
Happy birthday, David. We're not going to sing. You don't want that. Nobody wants that. David?
Thank you, everyone, for the birthday greetings, and if you want to sing, that's fine, I like that. Just one thing to put on, put on the, for future reference, I mean, Mo, if you could make sure that in any situation, you know, like we've had with these potential left-turn things that we have, affirmative, just even if it's the email from the traffic division and from the fire chief that says, "We have no concerns," to put it in, that was guessing, because for me, if I don't, if I don't see that, I'm, that's why I'm going to ask that question, because, I mean, we have to, we have to be cognizant, the population of this city is aging. I know 90 and 95-year-old people that are driving in this city. In fact, they had an accident about two months ago over on Newburgh and Joy Road, close to where my mom lives, and basically, a lady was coming out of the strip mall there where the Jonas is, and she tried to gun it to make a left so she could head north on Newburgh, and she went right across the street into that office building, and, and, because I think places like that are all, you know, something to start looking at. Left turns are always kind of dangerous, and one of the things I learned many moons ago when I started driving was they said, "Try not to make a left turn if you don't have to." And especially, you know, where I'm at most of the time, I'm glad I don't have to worry about making any turns. But definitely, but I also wanted to say, I appreciate you, David, as a chairman. I think you do an outstanding job. I think you keep us all on the straight and narrow, even though we kind of go astray a little bit, but I think the way you run the meetings, the professionalism, the knowledge is great. And again, I guess I'll say, I can't, I'll know, I'll always say at every meeting, I always appreciate Nicole and everything Nicole does as Mo. I think we, you know, I think it's great, Mo, to see that they're elevating you kind of and moving some things around, and hopefully they'll continue to take care of you, because you are quite a well-respected planner, not only in the state, but I understand there are other states that have, that have their eyes, and they, they watch what goes on here, and they see what happens, and it's pretty awesome. I know I have, I have told people to take a look at how our planning and that is run, and people come back and tell me, wow. You're, you're a credit to the city, and I appreciate that, and I'll just be quiet for the rest of the meeting.
The orchestra's playing. Deborah?
Yes, I agree that we did have a good meeting time, and it is good to see that as, as a group, as a commission, that we all were united in that one decision, and which made it a little easier for us to pass it on to the city council for their decision. Other than that, I, I will end my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deborah. And Deanna?
Yeah, I think that also we made the right decision in that respect, because we did have to stay with the policy and the zone for the shop and dine. And also, too, with a car wash, as the last two meetings ago, there was a statement in there that it could be in the future, a possible contamination problem. It was good that you had asked about how long these car washes exist, but we don't, we don't really know. And being that, we just have a brand-new conference area next door to that area, I really think that, I, I hope he does find another location. We'll see what happens with council, and that, that should be it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Anything from the petition?
No. Happy birthday, David.
Yeah. Happy birthday.
I was about to say, it's not my birthday. Well, you definitely got me on a few years there, David, and happy birthday to you. So once again, through the, on behalf of the entire, the entire board, I can't agree with, with David more. I think it is a wiser decision to, to require a response from, from these organizations rather than just rely on their, on their non-response as, as tacit approval. And I will say, I don't know if this happened during, during your, your stay, or if this was way back when Bruce Thompson, but we did have an issue, failed to respond, but did have an issue. And we had to, well, we had to revisit a thing and, and do some stuff. Once again, I don't remember if that came from your, your stay.
No, fair enough.
Let's just, let's just blame Bruce.
Fair enough, fair enough.
If he's watching.
I hear you. I agree.
So we, of course, do not require you to, to follow our recommendations or our requests. We don't, we don't hold that kind of power or authority, but I, I do, I do agree very much with, with what David said. Now, I am going to, I am going to speak briefly on disagreements. I love disagreements. I love arguments. I'm an attorney, that's what I live for. So don't ever feel like, like we need to walk away from the, from these meetings, soar at each other because we don't agree on every issue. It's, it's actually good and healthy that we have a good and healthy debate, and especially when the, when the public can see us have that good and healthy debate and still walk away friends, especially in today's climate. Also about regular order, I'm going to apologize right off the bat. I realize that I run at the mouth probably worse than anybody else.
You're like McDermott's, that's you.
However, it is my responsibility to try to keep us on regular order and to keep us from getting too annoyed at each other because [inaudible] the air out of the room. So I will be attempting to, well, moving forward to try to, well, to try to keep people from filibustering too badly, and I would ask you to, well, I would ask you to, to try to, to make your comments more efficient if you believe that, that I might be addressing you. So, but once again, I do feel bad every time I have to do that, and I just want you to know that it's never going to be a personal issue. And lastly, I would like to point out that this is Pride Month. If you have a friend or a family that, that is part of the LGBTQ community, please show a little bit of support and empathy. With that, motion to adjourn is in order. So moved. Moved and seconded. Those in favor, please indicate so. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it. The, the chair is not in question.
Who did the support?
We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.